All right, so Commissioner Hedlund, the floor is yours to leave us an indication.
Hello?
Will you hear me? Can you hear us, Mr. Hedlund?
Yes, I'm here. Want me to go ahead?
Yes, sir.
Lord, thank you for today. Thank you for the opportunity to serve. Lord, I just ask for the praise for this nation, especially with this national disease going around. Lord, I just ask that you bring it to it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. All right, next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the agenda.
All right, we've got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, Commissioners Hedlund and Johnson. Next up on the agenda is citizens' comments. Do we have any emails? Any citizens don't want to make a citizen's comment?
Matt, you've received several registrations.
Registration's brought from the planning board on Tuesday.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, if you'd like, I can certainly call through the callers that are on the phone.
Sure.
So callers on the line, I'll just go ahead and recognize you by the last four digits of your phone number. If you wish to public the comment, you're free to do so as they call on. You've got a phone number, 3738?
That's Bob Clark.
All right, call that the G-Bob.
Thank you.
And you've got a phone number, 7320?
This is Michael Collins.
All right, welcome, Michael. Thank you very much. And you've got a phone number, 2604?
This is Perry Evans.
All right, excellent. Thank you very much. We've got a phone number, 2277?
Jim Ball, no comment.
All right, thank you, sir. And we've got a phone number, 4829?
That's Aaron Jones.
All right, excellent. Thank you very much. And we've got a phone number, 7790?
Julie Johnson.
All right, welcome, sir. Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, that is the end of the list of callers. Actually, we do have one other person joining us via Teams, Brian Fagundes. Do you have any comments at this time, sir?
No, I did not.
All right, thank you, sir. That concludes the roll, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
All right, hearing no citizens' comments, we'll move along into the financial report. Audit presentation, Lee Grissom with S. Preston Douglas and Associates, LLP. Is he available?
Yes, Mr. Grissom, you'll be recognized at this time.
All right, good evening. Here, Mike.
Yes, again.
Then, Phil, does everybody have the graph copies of financial statements?
Yes, we have the financial copies that you sent us. We appreciate that.
Okay, and the graph, the four pages of graph, well?
Yes.
All right, this is our second meeting. My name is Lee Grissom, S. Preston Douglas, Associates, partner, audit partner for the firm recently, fifty governmental units. Overall, the financial records were very good. Were very present, staff has no issues. We counted a lot of our budget much early. Just due to the organized manner and both culture, you know, the turn over, the town, the only thing from the finance turnover is the finance problem. It doesn't give me all kind of filling in gas. We just have turnover, they have still filling in the...
This meeting is being recorded and are transcribed.
But anyway, move right along. We had a clean audit opinion, 2020. Year before, we had two findings, one related to pre-audit with dispersments, where the budget for each was major supposed to look at the budget. We saw some procedural issues. The town cleared up that one. And the only finding we had for fiscal year ended segregation of duties bonding for municipalities that's just due to the size of town of Youngsville.
Mr. Grissom, if I could pause you there, we're having a little bit of an issue hearing you. I think it might just be bandwidth because you're using your computer for audio. Would it be possible for you to join in with the telephone and not use Teams? And we can certainly move on to the next agenda item and get back to you right in two to three minutes? If that's all right?
Yeah, that works. That works, Bill.
Yeah, so if you could exit Teams and then just call back in and announce yourself when you're back with us, we'll re-recognize you. If that's all right?
All right, sounds good.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt, but I think it's just because of back connection. Let's go in and help that.
All right, so we'll press calls on the financial report and move on to the consent agenda. We've got packets here. Hopefully, everyone will have a chance to view those. The action request appears to approve the consent agenda as submitted. Go ahead, Mr. Grissom.
Second.
We've got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Commissioners Hedlund and Johnson, are you in favor of the consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, moving along to the old ones. Considered text amendments to the Youngsville Development Ordinance comply with new statutes, Chapter 160d, legislation. Action required here is to approve the text amendments as presented. Ms. Clinger, was there any input that you would like to give prior to me entertaining the motion?
I don't have anything additional to add. I would just want to remind the board that these amendments are required by state law.
Okay, thank you for that. Any questions from the commissioners before we move forward? All right. That's my understanding. Is there any meaningful change?
No, sir. The state legislature overhauled the separate statutory authority that provides municipalities the ability to regulate zoning and zoning-related matters with this new chapter of the General Statute 160d. Previously, we operated under 160a, which is the statute that enables local governments to do a variety of different things. And so this is just basically substituting any reference to 160a, those sections that give us the zoning authorities, to the new references, Section 160d. Would you agree with that, Ms. Clinger?
I would, but I did not hear the question.
Got it, yeah. As long as you agree with the answer, I think we're okay.
All right, any additional questions for Mr. Cordero or Ms. Clinger? All right, hearing none. So the action request appears to approve the text amendments as presented. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Second.
We've got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, and any votes?
And I think Mr. Grissom joined us. Are you on the line, Mr. Grissom?
New business, we've got our new applications for the ABC board, and we've got those in our packets here. And the previous applicants had a pretty substantial background in engineering, and that was what they made the board before, about Lee. There, we can speak to this as well if you would like to. But he's got a pretty significant background in like civilian engineering. Felt like his responsibilities were being pursued from the planning board. So I think Mr. Rupert is basically withdrawing his ABC board and moving it over to the planning board.
Yes, sir. That's correct. And we would welcome him on the planning board. Ms. Clinger, I believe you would agree with that recommendation. Is that right?
I would.
Thank you.
All right, and then we've got Kurt David. Hopefully, everyone was able to read the excerpts sent in. We're having to have new amendments. So if we've got any questions for the applicant, now we could ask those. Any questions, comments, concerns, anything like that? Did I explain the Ben Rupert situation succinctly enough for everyone?
Would you like to make any comments, Mr. David?
I don't think I know enough about what you're getting myself into. Mr. Stoll, you kind of threw my hat in the ring.
He does, yeah. I was gonna say, he does the Ruby Tower of Bonham.
Well, we appreciate that you're doing that. Because I'm tired, I just have a couple of town, you know. You know, I can always shout, "Dennis, Dennis."
Good.
Yeah. Wonderful, thank you for coming here.
All right, so if there's no additional questions, I'll actually entertain the two separate motions. One would be to approve Mr. David to the ABC board. The second would be accept Ben Rupert as the out-of-town liaison to the planning board. So first things first, we'll go with Mr. David for the ABC board. Do I hear a motion to accept the application and install him on the ABC board?
I move to accept his application and install him on the ABC board.
All right.
First and a second.
All right, do we have any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right, and that means no notes. Welcome to the ABC board.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
We've got a lot of trouble, a lot of trouble. All right, and the second motion is to accept Ben Rupert on the planning board. And I will entertain a motion for that.
I'm lucky.
Got a first, do I hear a second? Second, all right. All right, and any discussion before we move to vote on this? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Hearing none opposed, we just hear it. Okay, item B is considered memorandum of understanding of community support of natural gas as an alternative fuel.
And I'll ask, is Mr. Grissom on the line with us?
Yes, yes, I'm still here.
All right, we can hear you just fine. Maybe just speaking to your ancestor a little bit closer, and I think we're just waiting. Can you pick up where you left off?
All right, sounds good. So, yeah, this is our second year auditing the town of Youngsville. The financial information was in good shape this year. Management provided information in a timely, organized manner. We had no disagreements with management. We found no illegal acts. We thought the finance officer was new this year, but had a good, strong accounting background. And overall, it was a very competent, capable staff that we found. The best thing that we've seen in the town of Youngsville the last two years is the financial trends are extremely positive, as you'll see in the four graphs that you should have in front of you. I think let's just go over that at this point. Does everybody have that financial information?
We do.
And those would be the second items in your packet. Go ahead, Mr. Grissom.
And as an audit standpoint, you always want to see good trends. It just makes, you know, it definitely makes you feel more comfortable as you're auditing an entity that's going, you know, positive versus negative and all these trends. The first thing is analysis of fund balance for total governmental funds. And this is fund balance by fiscal year going back to 2015 through 2020. And you can see going back 2015, total fund balance, which, you know, that's essentially, that's your assets minus your liabilities, was 1.167 in 2015. And then you fast-forward to 2020, you're looking at $2.6 million. You can see the last two fiscal years, a pretty significant increase in fund balance in the governmental funds. And on page two, analysis of unassigned fund balance as a percentage of general fund expenditures. What this represents is the emergency fund for the general fund, which is the main operating fund of the town. Going back to 2015, the percentage was 62%. So 8.33% represents one month. So if you were to divide any of these numbers by 8.33%, that's where you are. So at 2020, you're at 77%. You're roughly 9% of emergency fund for the general fund for this fiscal year. And that's compared to last year, which was roughly a little over six months. So the reserve each year is continuing to increase in the last three fiscal years. Let's go to the next page. And this is just simply cash, you know, all funds of the town by fiscal year going back to 2015. And you can see 2015 to 2018, relatively flat, you know, 1.1 million to roughly 1.3 million in 2018. Last two years, you see a pretty big increase. 2019 is almost at $2 million. 2020 is at $2.7 million. Let's go to the next page. So we're looking at long-term debt by fiscal year going back to 2015 to 2020. You can see 2015, you know, really small, you know, nominal amount. 2016 up to $900,000. We had a pretty big increase in 2020, mainly because the town added $500,000 in capital lease obligations during this fiscal year. But in a nutshell, in the last several fiscal years, both cash and the reserves for the town of Youngsville have, you know, shown very positive trends, particularly over the last three fiscal years. Other metrics, just to point out, tax collection percentage is at 99.49%, which is very much in line with much of North Carolina. We had no budget issues this year. The town did a good job of staying within the budget. I think off the top of my head, the general fund was under budget roughly at $300,000 during the fiscal year. And you should have a copy of the financial statements. What I would recommend to everybody there, particularly the board members, if you go through the MDNA, you know, just in your spare time, and just read through that information, that highlights a lot of important things that occurred during fiscal year ended June 30 of 2020. If you have any questions, you can reach out to me. Another trend, I think, current ratio, which is the current assets over your current liabilities, that's at 5.2, which that's basically, that's your current assets can be divided into your current liabilities five times. And that's a very good, very favorable metric as well for the town. And overall, total assets are at $5.1 million. Total liabilities, $1.7 million, and total net position at $3.6 million. The change in net position from last fiscal year overall was $886,000. The change, the increase in fund balance in your governmental funds, and that's the fund accounting, was $733,000, $775,000. Most of that is due to an increase in the general fund balance of $797,000. And I do see that number, the general fund was actually under budget, just under $400,000 during fiscal year ended 2020. And the one finding I tried to mention earlier, last year, we had two findings. We got rid of one finding, just due to the size of the town of Youngsville's finance staff. There's just not enough staff to have a proper segregation of duties, you know, to divide all the tasks up, you know, in an ideal situation that you'd like if you were, say, city of Raleigh. That's the one finding we have for this fiscal year, and you'll probably see that going forward unless the town's willing to add additional staff. But we do want to point out that, given the limited number of staff, we do think that the current staff is very competent and capable. Does anybody have any questions? And that pretty much wraps up everything I wanted to cover tonight.
No, I think you've done a very good job of detailing what the findings were, and we appreciate you there, Mr. Grissom. Do you have any additional feedback for us, our commissioners?
No, I mean, I think, like I tried to mention earlier, I think Phil is very knowledgeable in governmental accounting, and although there's been some temporary staff working in the finance director position in the last couple of years, I think Phil does a great job of filling in the blanks. So, I mean, I think as a whole, the town, the town's in really good shape and looking very favorable for the future.
Okay, well, Mr. Grissom, we appreciate you dealing with the technical difficulties and balance back in and giving us that assertion. We certainly appreciate it and look forward to working in the future.
All right, thanks. You guys have a good evening.
Thanks you too. Also, we left all of that B, to consider memorandum of understanding of Dominion Energy supporting natural gas as an alternative fuel. Mr. Cordero?
Yeah, so signaling the town's support, maybe be nothing, alternative fuels for power. So essentially, it's a commitment from the town to partner in any reasonable way that we can with Dominion Energy and providing natural gas to homes. You know, obviously, there are other greener energies, and we certainly would support those as well. But natural gas is a very efficient energy used to heat homes and a variety of different things. And so this is just a way for us to commit and for Dominion Energy to also commit to us, to assist us in utilizing natural gas as an energy, large producer of natural gas and employs a lot of people in the state. So that's the reason why we're taking this step. It also kind of goes hand in hand with Dominion providing natural gas and structure. So not to say that we're doing this for that. Certainly, I think it recognizes their efforts to try to assist the town in pursuing natural gas as a way to, for example, heat our new buildings, a very easily produced product.
I like it. All right, any questions, comments, concerns from the commissioners? All right, hearing none. The action request appears to approve the memorandum as drafted. Do I hear a motion in?
I move to approve as drafted.
All right, first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right, and any opposed? I got four, I didn't know if Commissioner Johnson was there.
I think I got him.
All right, that motion carries. We'll move along into item C, which is resolution accepting the offer of dedication of streets for Royal Oak Southern Vision. Mr. Cordero, did you or Ms. Clinger have anything that you all want to add to that or to Kurt?
Ms. Clinger, did you have any comments?
Just to, you know, we received the request from Holden Development LLC, our consulting engineer, Robert Graham, had conducted a walkthrough inspection back in April to identify the needed repairs, and those items had been subsequently repaired by the developer, and I verified that those repairs had been completed. And we are recommending the board approve acceptance of these streets for town maintenance.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. Any questions, comments, concerns from the commissioners?
I have a question. This is our neighborhood for one, but I know we're taking over the streets, and then, sorry if this is in there, but does that mean we're taking over the street license and things like that too? Or is that done through Duke Energy?
Yes, the answer is yes and no. And that's because we actually have kind of an operating lease type relationship with Duke Energy for this event. But I think your question is, who do I call if I have an issue with the street license? Any...
Okay, because I've had questions about it in the last, or we've had a lot, it's been now four months. I didn't know if that was part of the town of now.
That's right. See, I would report those types of issues to Public Works. Mr. Smith, he will assist.
All right, I'm good.
All right, any other questions, comments, concerns? All right, hearing none. The action request appears to approve the resolution. Do I hear a motion?
Motion moved. Motion moved.
It was the first to Commissioner Wickens and the second to... Is that fair, Commissioner Hedlund?
I'm good.
All right, I knew you would be, bud. All right, so we've got a first and a second. Do we have any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none.
Aye.
Aye. Can't hear you.
Sorry, there's significant background noise. It's like, it sounded like a car crash. Hopefully, you got it on the drive. All my commissioners, okay. All right, anyway, we got the five yeses on that, so the motion carries there. Item B is resolution of intent to permanently close the northern portion of the 500 block of Hillsborough Street and a portion of Trodden Avenue and set a public hearing for December 10th, 2020. Mr. Cordero or Ms. Clinger, if you would like to give additional details before we...
I'll recognize Ms. Clinger.
So Youngsville Storage is requesting the closure of those portions of Hillsborough Street and Trodden Avenue so that they can expand their existing facility. We solicited comments from our TRC, and they have had no concerns about the proposal. So we are, and the portion of Hillsborough Street currently ends at Youngsville Storage's existing entrance, and Trodden Avenue is essentially a dirt path. So we are recommending that you adopt the resolution of intent to close the streets.
Okay, and this in no way would impact any of the current residents on Hillsborough. They'd still be able to get in and out of the property with the...
They'd still be able to get in and out of the property with these?
That's, that's correct. So the street closure would start roughly at Youngsville Storage's current entrance. So that portion actually extends into their property right now.
Okay.
But none of the existing houses would be impacted.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Are there any questions, comments, concerns from the commissioners? Hearing none. The action request appears to consider adopting the resolution of intent and set a date for the public hearing on December 10th, 2020. Do I hear a motion you got?
Some of...
We got a first, so I hear a second.
Second.
All right, we got, we got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, and that motion carries, there's none opposed. Item E, presentation of annexation petition 2020 dash three for Hampton Downs, phase one D. Mr. Hertz, we have.
This is just the second portion of the Hampton Downs two-foot subdivision. They, once they finished doing the structure, they had applied all of the annexations to their final stage. I have all of the signatures. They found their own individual position, just like you have the petition. The tractions and the map shows different individual lots and lots first and there's also this individual duplexes included as well.
Okay. Thank you for that. So moving along, item F, resolution directing approach to a new petition received under General Statute 168 S31 for annexation petition 2020 dash three. The action request appears to approve the resolution. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Second.
All right, we've got a first and a second. Is there any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I wonder if we lost someone else. All right. Did I miss a gentleman? I only got four.
I didn't hear Commissioner Hedman. Commissioner Hedman, are you still with us?
Aye, yeah.
Sir. All right, and item G is the presentation of specificity of sufficiency, annexation petition 2020 dash three. Sir, did you have anything in addition that you wanted to add?
I would think that was enough time to go ahead and do the investigation. All signatures are appropriate, representative of the corporation and everything that's been got.
Perfect. Thank you for that. And we'll move into item H, which is the resolution fixing date of public hearing on question of annexation pursuant to the statutes 168 S31, the annexation petition 2020 dash three. The action request appears to approve the resolution fixing date of public hearing for November 5th, 2020. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second. All right, we've got a first and we've got a second. Is there any additional discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none. All in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, and there are none opposed. Of course, another business, Mr. Mayor, you should go first. Very excited about the golf tournament tomorrow. Looking forward, trying to raise some money for our local Asian men's guys and get out there, smash the ball around a little bit. So I don't know that my teammates, please, that they got to carry my, my slack around, but we'll get it figured out. Very pleased with the direction in the, the planning that's associated so far with the holiday and also I think both events this year are just going to be spectacular. So I'm very excited about that as well. Commissioner Hedman, I don't want to steal your thunder, but I appreciate you and the Kiwanis as well as Commissioner Brain for being down last Saturday, trying to help keep Youngsville beautiful. We collect, I know it's over 20 hours. And I don't know what the solution to all that is. Try to go out and try. It's great thinking since you told it or something, I don't know what's going on with that. But, you know, it's difficult, but we try to lead by example and keep these roads clean and I just, I'm sure everybody wants to follow mine, but, you know.
Thank you, sir. All right, so I have a few items here. The first is the Main Street project, as you've been informed via email, it is now on. That's excellent news. The, more currently the Department of Transportation, just make you aware that their cash reserves have increased significantly as a result of a variety of different measures they've taken. They had, as you can, we'll wear previous conversations, they had intended to enter into deferred reimbursement agreements with a variety of municipalities once their cash reserve reached a certain level. They did have a small amount of funds, I think it was about $5 million, maybe $10 million, that they could provide to municipalities for immediate reimbursement and I think due to our extraordinary efforts to have DOT move this project forward, they've allocated those funds to us so we won't have to defer reimbursement, which is excellent news. We're just grateful for their cooperation. At this time, our intention is to advertise the project construction on Tuesday of next week, October 13th. We will conduct a pre-bid conference on the 27th of October. We'll issue a final addendum to the interested vendors by November 3rd. We will close the question and answer period by November 5th and we'll have a bid opening at Town Hall on November 12th. The vendor who is going to be administering the construction process and inspection process for us, June 1st, will tabulate all of the awards, or sorry, all of the bids and we will submit our formal award letter to DOT based on the selection space criteria. And by November 15th, we should receive their approval. And so our tentative presentation of the final contract for the construction of that project will be presented to this board January 14th and we will issue a notice to proceed to the firm that is successful in that solicitation process by January 25th. So we intend to begin construction by January 25th. We just didn't feel it was right to try and force something, especially before the holidays. A lot of times that can make construction more difficult, but we're happy to do that. Estimated construction timeframe is now nine months and that's just because we've incorporated about $800,000 worth of work for Franklin County Utilities. They'll be replacing essentially a lot of the water lines on Main Street, which is very good for us insofar as, well, it's not good in the respect that it makes our project longer, but it does make it better for us insofar as there's a failure in one of those moving down the road, we won't have to be cutting into our brand new sidewalks and brand new streets. So although it'll be a little bit more painful due, in the short term, I think this is certainly the best way to go about that. So we'll certainly, you know, keep you updated on, on the progress of construction. We'll keep the business owners that are downtown apprised of those schedules as well. That way, for example, when sections of sidewalks that are being closed in front of their business will be closed, they'll be aware and, you know, if you have pain that's associated with that will be minimized to maximum extent possible. Any questions?
That sounds exciting. It's been a long time coming.
I guess family's finest, like.
Now you see they have another house so they can walk, if that's not true in a appropriate time. You just mentioned several times that your goal was to have you to walk your children over these, you know, sidewalks, because Youngsville is there.
I'm helping out the fire when it's raining.
There you go. I like that. I like that. Any other questions or comments on the Main Street project? All right, the next item I'd like to update you on is the ABC store has gone through a process, the upset bid process that we went through, for example, to sell the Old Town Hall building and the sale was approved at $395,000, which will net a significant cash flow to the ABC board, which it intends to use to open a second store in Foodline Shopping Center, which I think will be an excellent decision for that enterprise. I think there's a lot of customers who, when shopping at that food line, would also buy their liquor there and I think it'll, it'll increase the revenues that that enterprise generating that come back to the town, which will allow us to potentially reduce the tax rate and/or fund other improvements like sidewalks and other areas of town and, and other types of things. So that is moving forward and of course, you know, Mr. David will learn of, of the other exploits of the ABC board, but very thankful for their cooperation and I think they're headed in the right direction. Any questions on the sale of the ABC store? I, I will note that we have negotiated a leaseback of the current property, so we're not going to move the ABC store from its current location and we are exploring the potential for whenever the developer is ready to renovate that property in a manner that's consistent with the town's long-term plan, comprehensive plan, that we might move across the street to the Five Points Shop, or Five Points Common Shopping Center that has the subway and the Diamond Pizza establishment and that we might, that might be our new home until probably a three to five year range that it would take to actually, you know, get rid of the building there and really kind of turn that property into something that we would be much happier to have in that location. So that's also kind of in the works as well. But the immediate plan is to move for opening a second location at that Foodline Shopping Center just because of the additional revenues you'll bring in. The, the Foodline, I think, brings in over $20 million a year from the last time that we had evaluation done and, so I, I think we had a certainly significant customer base. Any questions on that ABC store development?
Just to kind of understand that timeline, open a second store, hang out, regular downtown, move over to Five Points and still have two stores and then move that over to the new development on the corner and still have two stores. So as soon as I put Foodline, we're keeping two stores permanently.
Correct.
Moving us from that to forth.
Yes, ma'am. And, you know, it's, the, the last part of your kind of order of events, moving back from Five Points back into the current location, maybe may not happen and it really depends on, you know, what the developer wants to do at that site. I mean, there's just a lot of things that are kind of up in the air, but either way, you know, we would certainly be open to it if there was good space for us and we thought it was the best, the decision for the, the long-term financial stability of the enterprise.
So when you move over to Five Point, is that a smaller area than...
It's actually larger, which will be beneficial to us. So they're, they're currently operating...
It's a larger area.
Well, so it's, it's interesting actually, and I'll share this with you because I'm not sure that I've directly corresponded with anyone on the board about this. The, the street space business that was behind the current vacant space, which is the Bulldog March Art Suite, that's at least the sign up in front, is also vacant now. So what we're thinking of doing when we move in Five Points Common is basically turning that street space suite into a warehouse, which is much needed to increase our inventory, to provide a different selection of liquor that customers have asked for, for example, and then to use the front end of it as a retail space. So the retail space that they're operating at now is about 1,900 square feet. The unit that we're going to be moving into in the front is about 1,900 square feet. So the retail space will remain essentially the size of the current store and then we gain another 15 to 1,800 square feet behind that we can turn into a warehouse. Any other questions or comments? The next item we have is our Shop of the Cop event. I'll leave that to Chief Flitman. I'm sure he'll provide an update on that. Brief update on capital project. So we are moving along with our lease finding signs. We'll notice our new sign has been installed in front of Town Hall. I think it looks excellent. Thank you very much to Mr. Smith, Mr. Curry and Mr. Fuller, our Public Works crew for assisting with that. They're not all the way done, but I'm, I'm confident it looks great already and it'll certainly look a lot better when they do some of the other minor improvements like adding stones, the wood that was there and they're going to, you know, revitalize that mulch there. But so that, that I think is an excellent, an excellent improvement. And then Luddy Park has had some stairs that were recently completed, they're field free. I think they're excellent and certainly a lot safer to get down field free than it was before. We've received the first part of a shipment of our lights for a basketball court. I, I understand that the Mounties on the Canadian border upheld the second part of the shipment in custom and so we're working on getting those on, to us, should have those in a few weeks, but we look forward to adding this basketball court light. And our gates were also recently installed at the entrance to Luddy Park as well. Our Public Works facility project is moving along. We just completed, nearly completed the final spaces of design, which I presented to you at your last meeting. Those plans are in the process of being revised based on some final comments that I provided to the design build firm. They will be submitted for review and approval and we anticipate construction on that facility beginning in November, December and being completed by March. So that project is on track. I will express my gratitude for Ms. Kat Motluk and working with the local government commission to have our financing for that project approved. It was a very, I think, good first time experience for Ms. Kat Motluk. There were a variety of different issues before the local government commission last week and ours took about two minutes to approve and I think it, when you hear a lot of the questions that the state auditor and the state treasurer ask local governments that are not doing so well financially, when they ask to borrow money, it's good to know that they're being asked the questions and we aren't. So we certainly are very happy to have that approved. That's the, I'll give you one more reminder that our next meeting will be November 5th, not November 12th and that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions from the commissioners to go, Mr. Cordero? All right. Commissioner Redd, here. All right, Mr. Brain? All right, and Commissioner Johnson?
I'm good, man. Thank you.
All right, and Commissioner Hedman?
Yeah, I ju, I just wanted to thank you and Mayor and Commissioner Brain for helping with that road clean. We also, we had the We Serve group that had like 10 folks out there, so it was a good day. I was going to clean one, eh, but I ran into a little health snag. I'm done.
All right. Well, thank you for that update and we'll move along into the fire department update. They are still continuing to operate under COVID-19 restrictions for protection personnel. I understand they so because of some of the issues that have popped up around Wake Forest and Clayton, so we certainly understand that. Assistant Chief Brain also reports, there's been no issues with response. Due to COVID-19 currently, they are operating at normal capacity in terms of response. He did indicate that incidents from January 1st, September 30th of 2020 is at 692. Incidents for the same time period last year were at 818, which is a percentage change of 15%. And September 2020 incidents are at 57. The incidents, uh, tied are two structural fires, six outside fires, 12 EMS calls, non-veterable accidents, one hazmat, 15 investigation calls, canceled, no emergency, 12 automatic fire alarm activations. That is the fire department order and we'll move along into maintenance.
On the maintenance, the only thing I have to say, anything that has been previously reported is starting Monday, we will put our brand new cap on the project, using the equipment in progress. The head of state is currently bidding Town Hall pretty late. He will see the Marrow Hunt, who will use it for the first time on the road to perform bulk service for the guys practicing activities. But that's the other thing, our next project will also need to repair the lights for five points or the new system of finance that should be here soon, so that way it will be eliminated by Town Hall.
Outstanding. Any questions from Mr. Smith? Does everyone understand what you're talking about with the new...
Okay.
...car truck, garbage truck?
Yes.
Now, you say you're going to use it for a bulk pickup. Now, that's just to try it out and then if we do...
and then if we do. I know the big deal is that, uh, Darren and Eddie have not made the ball using the truck though. It's basically gonna be with, uh, the primary or fracas of those guys, I heard, and that mechanism's other bit, and it's four feet, and what it will be actually moved into the crash surf. Okay, the, uh, also will allow the developers to clear the truck out and make sure that we need to, uh, dress fire taking off, so let's serve. So long-term, is that I did use it for both, both pickup and trash? Okay. All right, and that's had to go on to list. The agent had a long room back, so it was actually mainly, uh, okay. All right, okay, good, 'cause I know, uh, right, put it there. It'll be a little bit of a manual cleanup, but, uh, this will, uh, thank you.
All right, any, uh, additional questions, comments, concerns from Mr. Smith? All right, thank you very much. Uh, moving along to another, Mr. Smith, Parks and Recreation.
Baseball season's going along strong. The Fire Department's week evolved this week, and to name fireworks, Mr. Brain, presidency, appreciate that, touching the T-ball, you, really appreciate that one. Uh, Halloween's looking great, or we're gonna have, uh, more vendors than last year, when we, uh, got lucky with, uh, taxes, she helped get, uh, Charles' Bob's locked in as well, so we have another food truck. Um, really tough item, it's really food, we haven't tried that before, so that's a nice pickup there. Uh, Christmas tree lighting and planning is going well, looking forward to doing that this year, and that's gonna be a nice little bit to all the other ones that want to do, um, looking forward to that. Mountain Phantom Pumpkin Car Night, gonna be a lot of fun, you remember the little part of pumpkin, come tell me that, do that, um, on that.
All right, outstanding. Any, uh, questions, comments, concerns from Mr. Smith?
Uh, baseball's been really great this year. Good fun to throw that out. I really feel like if you come back, people must come back, like kids could actually want to play baseball, and it's been really nice for my child and the children as well. So thank you.
Yeah, I've talked to numerous friends that I haven't seen, and they find out that their kids are playing there. Yeah, well, we don't have it, but we don't like it where we're at, so they're traveling to here to participate, so I mean, you're doing something right, so that's good.
He's the red player of... You're welcome. All right, um, moving along into planning and zoning. Um, Squerner, you still with us?
I am. So last month we had...
All right, I didn't mean to overtalk you. Go right ahead.
No, it's okay. Last month we had 16 permit applications submitted and issued, um, seven for new homes, four temporary food truck permits, and five for other projects. Um, one certificate of compliance was issued. No new illegal signs were identified as far as I am aware, although hopefully, um, once I'm back at work next week, I'll be able to go out and do sign sweeps again. Got, uh, two upcoming projects that will come before the board next month, um, the text amendment to modify the regulations for food trucks, and a rezoning petition from Youngsville Academy, um, from SFR 3 to Civic for a parcel on Hicks Road. Planning Board recommended approval of both projects at Tuesday night's meeting, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, any questions, comments, concerns from Squerner? All right, hearing none, we'll move along to Chief Witley.
Sir, uh, the officer's still at 434 calls for service this past month, uh, only 15 reports were taken, and only 15, um, investigations were taken. Uh, I don't know of possible criminal activity, which is an excellent ratio when you have your 15 reports taken from 434 contacts or calls from our citizens. I'm happy to report there are no criminal incidents during that time period. We had six traffic collisions compared to six traffic collisions in the same month last year. Again, happy to report that, uh, there were no significant injuries as a result of those traffic collisions, and that would contribute to, uh, the targeted enforcement efforts that the, uh, God and Gallery Department have been making this last month. Speaking of that, uh, we've had targeted enforcement areas at Camille Circle and Blue Hurricane Drive regarding complaints, uh, for neighbors or folks running the stop sign there. I think it was mainly construction traffic, where we were getting ahead of it pretty early in the home conditions, unfortunately, uh, not a lot of citations were issued, which is what you want to see, which would also be trying to have this, uh, informed approach before we begin issuing those types of citations. We've gotten just in touch with, uh, some construction managers out there at the site, and informed them what sort of, uh, direct drivers, those are CDOs, if they continue bad activity, but, uh, to those of my guys, uh, for their proactive approach, uh, to that enforcement effort, uh, efforts out there. Also, Franklin and Cross, uh, we had a complaint out there about folks running the, the stop sign, it was evident, I observed some of it myself, uh, and the town manager was out there as well, and see, observed a couple incidents, so we got ahead of that. Issue some warnings, right now there we have, uh, our speed monitoring device, our speed sensor, it's commonly called out there, uh, and if, uh, if you pull up, we'll see if the, uh, advise our drivers to stop ahead and flashes, won't show that stop sign, so we will probably move into enforcement action considering the, uh, the steps we've taken, make everyone aware of the, uh, software and, uh, so, sure, I'd say. Again, uh, speaking to the enforcement actions that they're taking downtown surrounding, uh, outline areas that's kind of expanded, there were 136 citations, uh, issued during this reported period that comprised 168 charges, 51 warnings, uh, which leads up to a considerable amount of enforcement action, which is what I would expect considering the traffic volume we have in town and trying to stay ahead of that. Uh, again, when we see that many, uh, issu- uh, issuances of warnings and citations, which you only see six, uh, collisions, the no injuries, that's sort of what you want, so, all right, the officers being proactive, uh, mitigating or high-speed vehicle collisions typically, uh, resulting in injury. Uh, other citations, uh, that were issued, uh, in contacts with this was only had one felony drug charge and one became the I during that reporting period. Again, uh, it, uh, just to attribute that to the officers being visible on the street, uh, folks that would otherwise commit those types of activities are avoiding, you know, before those of the officers present, basically. Moving on to community, uh, leasing efforts. Uh, we're sponsoring a blood drive, uh, in cooperation with Bay Back Church, October 10th, that'll be from 10 to 2 P.M. Uh, each donor will receive a $10 gift card, and in addition to that, $10 will go towards special, limited, brief donation given to, for anybody who participates if they're available. Uh, we'll have a drug take back event on October 24th from 1 to 4 P.M. This event will allow women to drop off unwanted, and use or inspire renegations at police department, uh, just in that effort to make sure that those controlled substances don't get disdirected, uh, you know, in, in the hands that we don't want them now. Just telling you a mission earlier, uh, we have, uh, a number of other events, one of which would be, uh, the Downtown Trick or Treat, uh, which will take place on October 30th of 2020, uh, 3 P.M. to 6 P.M. Uh, this will be our local businesses, uh, and vendors downtown, and we're, we're gonna supplement that with law enforcement efforts, making sure that folks can cross the, uh, streets down here safely. We'll also have a booth of our own set up right up front, uh, administrative, our administrative specialist, um, is actually sitting, uh, will be out there, passing out candy, meeting with the, with the folks that are participating in that event, and we'll have officers up and down the roadway out here as well. Kind of following that event, there will be a, uh, short overlap of about an hour. Uh, we'll move to the Trick or Treat Trail Event, uh, when this is on October 30th, same day. We'll also have a table on the trail with the vendors, uh, so, you know, folks can come around and, and greet the officers and receive some candy and ask any questions on our current project, uh, also, uh, as Mr. Squerero mentioned earlier, we're continuing, I have to say that the, uh, our second Shop With A Cop event, which will be held on December 15th of this year, uh, also happy to say that Walmart, uh, has agreed to have a, a conventional shop with a cop event, like we originally intended, where, uh, each of the kids and families will get assigned for an officer to go out and shop, so we won't have to modify that as we originally, uh, thought we made, uh, so that's gonna be, that's gonna be a great opportunity for the kids to interact with officers, uh, and we're all very aware of some of the social issues that we're dealing with now, so the opportunity we can for those types of interactions, we look forward to that this year. Uh, moving on to administrative training and activities, officer Jason Conrad, we're busy to do a training officer force at Wake Tech, uh, that's gonna help us tremendously with our cadet program that I spoke to, uh, during our last session. Uh, we anticipate taking on, uh, two cadets, uh, for BLT and an additional officer. Uh, at this time, on 14th of this month, we have, uh, screening and interview process and panel, uh, for those applicants, so we'll look forward to that, and we appreciate them going through appropriate training to help us to, uh, have the best officers that we may, and, uh, sure.
Outstanding. Um, any questions, comments, concerns? All right, hearing none, I'll move on to the town attorney, uh, Mr. Code, you still with us?
Yes, I am. I have, uh, nothing to report.
All right, thank you, sir, and, um, we'll move along to our town clerk, tax collector, uh, Mr. Sher.
All right, um, as I mentioned a little bit earlier, but we are in the process of working the, uh, pizza Christmas parade and the tree lighting ceremony. As always, we need extra volunteers, so if you're ready, I'll send them our way. Um, so far, uh, good, the tree lighting ceremony will take place at Nitch Mark on Friday from 4:30, from 4:37 a.m. The actual tree lighting ceremony itself will take place at 6:00, and then the Christmas parade, uh, will be starting in the morning at 10:00 a.m., as always, we'll close down roads at 9:30, which should be open around 11:00 orish.
What's involved, is the...
For the Christmas parade? They would help with staging, um, for the Christmas parade, I would be able to stage the areas, um, they can pick which ones they want to drop off location, or help to line up a different float. Um, after the parade is staged, they would move over to the Witty Park to help the children get off the float and get everybody out of town. Um, we have detailed notes that we have put together for all our volunteers to be able to know what their time duty will be. The tree lighting ceremony, um, no big crafts and, you know, caroling, hanging out to different carolers and stuff like that, so it won't be as intensive as the parade would be, but that would be, uh, they would, they would report to Andrews in the tree lighting ceremony, they could maybe do that, but definitely need to be more help with the staging area this week.
Uh, with the...
Uh, 16 are over. And that's all I have.
All right, any questions, comments, concerns for, uh, sir? All right, hearing none. Uh, the next item on the agenda is closed session, and we do need to go to closed session tonight, uh, where we will join, move for a brief S318 dot 11, which is personal, so I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Thank you, Mr.?
Second. All right, any discussions before we move to those? Hearing none, all in favor? All right, and any votes?
All right.
We'll move into closed session. All right, okay, so we've got some great news, and now it's time to adjourn. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
All right, now, first in the section, any discussions before we move? Hearing none, all in favor? All right, and any votes?
All right.
Have a great night, gentlemen.